Good evening. Welcome to this December 9, 2021, meeting of the Mansfield Board of Education. My name is Kathy Ward. I am the board chair. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. The public may view this meeting live at mansfieldct.gov/video. When I call your name, would you please just say here, if you're here? Susannah Everett.
Here.
Martha Kelly.
Here.
Edith Allison.
Here.
Dave Latrico. Dave's here. I'm looking at him. Catherine Paulus. Jeanette Picard.
Here.
Elizabeth Verge. And Kelly Zimmerman.
Here.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask all members to please speak clearly into your microphone. Turn the microphone on when you want to speak and turn it off when you're done. Just because we're having some, we have had some difficulty with people on Zoom being able to hear. Susannah, would you read our mission statement, please?
I would love to. It is the mission of the Mansfield Public Schools in partnership with the Mansfield community to ensure that each and every child develops the knowledge, skills, and dispositions essential for civic engagement and personal excellence in learning, life, and work within our global, oops, local and global community.
Great. Thank you very much. That brings us to approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes from November 18, 2021, regular meeting? No corrections. May I have a motion then to approve the minutes of November 18?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Kelly Zimmerman. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeanette. Are there any objections to approving these minutes? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Communications, we received a letter from Julie Hodgson regarding class sizes. That brings us to our first hearing for visitors. Is there anyone who'd like to approach the board? Seeing none. We have any additions to the present agenda? That brings us to committee reports. Finance Committee met prior to this meeting this evening to review the financial statements dated September 30, 2021. Our general fund revenues, which is the cost-sharing grant for fiscal year 2122, is budgeted at 9.5 million based on state estimates. 25% of that grant should be reflected, we should have received that payment in the next quarter. Another 25% payment is scheduled for January and a final 50% in April. There are no Board of Education expenditures concerns at this time. Our special education reserve account began the year with a balance of 59,597,000. We anticipate remaining on budget. Once again, the cafeteria fund expenditures exceeded revenues by almost $65,000. That should be remediated once we receive money from the federal government. The fund balance in that cafeteria fund is currently 84,422. The health insurance fund, we saw expenditures exceed revenues through the quarter by 153,000. Claims through September averaged 698,000 as compared to 550,000 last fiscal year, which represents a 2.68 increase. Our fund balance in this account is 5.2 million. Please remember that to be considered fully funded, we need approximately 2.1 million, but we would like to keep it a little higher than that. You can view the Student Activity Fund breakdowns for each school in your packet. And we also reviewed the quarterly financials for September 30 through, September 30, 2021. The Finance Committee recommends we accept the financials via the consent agenda tonight. And that brings us to Policy Committee. Susannah?
The Policy Committee met last week. We had not met, we, oh, I'm going to talk into the microphone. We had not met, we met briefly in August of 2020 to kind of update some COVID-related policies, but hadn't met as a full committee, well, we met as a full committee then, but we had not met with Shipman &amp; Goodwin since right previously to the pandemic in March of 2020. So there's a lot to catch up on. Although I will say that, you know, certainly I think that the lack of meeting reflects the lack of changes up until this past year from the legislature, from the legislature. So we met with Dory Antonetti last week to review all those statutory changes. You all have a copy of the Redline version, again, aligned with all the statutory requirements. I will encourage you to take a look at this kind of still fairly large summary that helps with kind of giving us some highlights about updated changes, but I will also go over briefly some of the things that we spent some time on last week. First, oh, go ahead.
Just a question. Do you want to wait until that comes up as an agenda item to review all of that?
Oh, sure.
Or do it now?
We can go, we can do it then. I apologize. I'm sorry. I got all excited about that. I launched into my speech. I will wait.
That brings us to Information, Presentations, and Actions. Kelly, enrollment projections?
Great. Thank you very much. I'll give Jamie a minute to get the slides up. There we go. As we have been doing annually for many years, we asked Pete Prada, who is a demographer, to do enrollment projections for us. He looks at our enrollment projections 10 years out, but he uses a tremendous amount of data to help him create those projections. And the data include an analysis of what has happened in the past, including his own projections and the accuracy of those projections. So I'm going to go to the next slide and give you some of the highlights. So one of the things that, as you can imagine, he's spent quite a bit of time considering this year in doing the enrollment projections was the effect of the pandemic on what's happening to birth rates and to school enrollments in general. Couple of things that he noted. He noted that there seems to be a continued decline in enrollment across the state, especially at the elementary level. The degree to which that is directly related to COVID is not known, but you will recall that there, we were experiencing a statewide decline in enrollment even prior to the pandemic. He also noted a statewide decline in births in the year 2020, but an increase in the year 2021, suggesting that the year 2020 might be the anomaly, which will have an impact on us certainly in a couple of years when those 2020 babies become kindergarten age. He also noticed a slight decrease in magnet school enrollment, but an increase in homeschool enrollment. And interesting to note, our own experiences here in Mansfield pretty much mirror this, although you'll see that our births in 2020 and 2021 remain stagnant. We didn't really have much of the decline that he noticed statewide. So he has taken all of this into account as he has created projections for us for the next 10 years. Couple of other trends of interest in Mansfield particularly. Mansfield's enrollment pattern over the last 40 years has followed similar trend lines to what we've seen in the state enrollment. And in a moment, I'm going to show you a graphic of that. However, while the state is in a decline, as is Mansfield, Mansfield's decline in enrollment began earlier than the state's decline did and is deeper, meaning if we followed the rate of decline at the state, we would have 77 more students in our school now. Instead, we have 77 fewer, suggesting that our decline is a little bit deeper. As I mentioned, the birth rate in Mansfield remains stable from 2020 to 2021, but it is less than the high of the last 10 years, which was all the way back in 2011. The other thing that you notice when you look at our data over time is that our growth rate would suggest that families with school-aged children are moving into Mansfield. In other words, the number of children in Mansfield schools exceeds the number of children born in Mansfield. And I think we can all attribute that to all kinds of reasons. And one of it may have to do with the number of families that move here to seek graduate studies. But we also know that our own enrollment trends, just anecdotally, over the last few years, would suggest that there are lots of families who are choosing Mansfield, moving here from other communities with school-aged children already. And the other thing that I thought was really interesting in this report is that between 2016 and 2020, there was an average of two net new housing units constructed in Mansfield each year. Yeah, two. So two per year, so not two in four years, but still, that would suggest that there's little growth here because of new homes, and that's something for us to consider as well as we think long range about the enrollment trends here in Mansfield. So the next slide, this one right here, shows you that black line is what's happened in the state with regards to enrollment. The blue line shows Mansfield. And so the numbers only relate to Mansfield, obviously not to the state. But the black line is the state trend. So you can see that all the way back in the mid-'80s, the state dropped enrollment and so did Mansfield. And then Mansfield actually picked up enrollment a little bit faster and a little bit more quickly than the state did. But now we are experiencing a decline that started a little bit sooner than the state's decline and, as I mentioned before, is a little bit deeper. I just think it's a really interesting graphic to show what's happening in Mansfield in comparison to the whole state. So now looking at projections themselves. This is the projection that Pete Prada is making for us in our pre-K to eight, so the entire district, over the next 10 years. You can see on the left-hand side the numbers and on, obviously, on the right-hand side, a visual of that. But you will notice from 2022 to 2031, there are no pluses in any of those annual changes. It appeared, oh, I take that back. There was a .2% gain in 2028, but for the most part, you can see that we are on a trend to decline. This is not a surprise. We've, I've been talking about this with you for many years now, and it certainly was a contributing factor when we considered what to do with our elementary schools. So again, next year, we should expect 15 to 20 fewer students, but by 2031, our total population is projected to be all the way down to 855. 140 students below the current level, which is a 14% decline. And just so you're aware, that the state is projected to decline in that same period of time by only 4.1%. And again, this is not news to us. There have been demographic studies for several years now indicating that the eastern part of Connecticut is going to experience a more rapid population decline than other parts of the state. The average enrollment over the next 10 years, 910 students, but the average enrollment for the previous 10 years was 1170. So again, it gives you an indication of the depth of the decline. If we break this down into elementary and middle school, you can see the 10-year projection for pre-K to four. Not quite as deep a decline as you're going to see on the next slide. You actually see it, some pluses in that percent change on the left-hand side of the screen. But again, 533 students to 490 students 10 years out. Question? Okay. Yep. And the middle school, here's where you're going to see the deeper decline. So the middle school at 446 currently dropping down, excuse me, 474 currently, dropping down to 367 in 10 years. That's a pretty significant decline.
I just have a quick question about the difference in numbers between the elementary school and the middle school. Is that due to, is that due to a greater opportunity for magnet schools at that age level? Or the birth rates in the years, you know, 10 to 12 years before that?
Right. So I think that Pete would, so they do, we do look at the rate at which students tend to stay in Mansfield. And that, actually, I think I have another statement about that somewhere, or maybe I didn't put it on the slides, but I read it in the report. We actually have a pretty stable overall rate. So even though we have, in the past, experienced students who come and go, again, often because their parents are doing graduate work, our overall numbers tend to stay pretty steady from year to year at the middle school level. I think that the difference is that there, when you are projecting middle school enrollment, you're projecting with a knowledge base of actual children. So that's exactly how he looks at it. He looks at the actual children in elementary school and he looks at the trend to see the staying power, if you will, of middle school, elementary students to stay in our schools. The elementary children is a little bit harder because you're projecting at a time when the children aren't even born yet, let alone in our schools. And so those trends, he needs to gather from other sources by looking at the birth rate in our community based on the number of women of childbearing age versus the number of women having children in that period of time. And anytime you're looking at demographic information in a college community that includes young adults, it can be skewed somewhat by the fact that often it's students who are part of your demographic numbers. But you will see, the last slide I'm going to show you, he's pretty accurate despite all of that.
So it's not really due to some issue that we need to address at the middle school rather than just to demographic statistics?
Correct.
Thank you.
Susannah?
If I could ask also, I don't know whether he includes this or does this work for our surrounding districts, but I know that our trends are pretty similar to our close neighbors.
So actually, in the report he provided us last year, he gave us some data on some of the surrounding communities. So even if he's not doing the projections, he can pull actual data. And what we found that was that the rate of loss in Mansfield was smaller than the rate of loss in surrounding communities. And I actually made note of that in the presentation last year. I did not see those data this year, but that doesn't surprise me either. Again, if you look at the statewide demographic data studies that have been done, that mirrors what you see in the statewide studies.
Thank you.
And so in the final slide, I just note that we, I think we do receive a benefit of having worked with Pete Prada for so many years because his enrollment projections are pretty accurate for us. So in 2021, current year, our elementary enrollment is six students more than he projected. That's pretty darn close, I'd say. The middle school enrollment is 19 students less. And he does make mention in his report that that was a little greater than he would have expected for a decline. But again, we're not attributing it to anything in particular. In fact, our numbers at magnet schools are down, just as they are across the state, as I mentioned. And the numbers of students homeschooled is up a little bit, but I don't have a clear enough dataset right in front of me to know how many of those students would be middle school age. I will tell you that more of those children were younger because of the concerns of a lack of vaccination at the start of the school year. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Kelly. Now we can go on to Board of Ed policy updates first read.
Now I get to dive in. Sorry about that. So we have access to, again, the Redline copy of our policy changes. And I am going to briefly, as I said, go over some of the things that we discussed. But please, other policy committee members chime in and let me know what I'm missing. So one of the things that we discussed last week were changes in nondiscrimination language. Across, that shows up across multiple areas in our policy manual. Specifically, some definitions around a veteran and of race. So those, again, reflect statutory changes or requirements. And with hairstyle also was included around nondiscrimination in that nondiscrimination policy. Another change, there are approximately, Kelly told me, or we talked about also in the Policy Committee, 2,000 pages of Title IX regulations. And those, again, show up across multiple areas in our policy changes. There are also some training requirements that Michelle has probably already done. Oh, oh, there are a lot of new regulations around Title IX, around sexual harassment. So those show up across multiple areas. They are reflected. The legislative or statutory changes are reflected in our policy manual across multiple areas. Anything else about that?
Yeah, so what she was saying was that the changes that they had to make to the Title IX, the sexual harassment policies were significant, and they had to cull it down from 2,000 pages into some policy language that met all the expectations of that new language.
So there were 2,000 pages and not 2,000 changes?
No, not quite 2,000 changes, but there are, there is quite a bit of language change in that policy.
Yeah, we didn't have 2,000 changes. We just, the, the.
The attorneys had to review.
Attorneys had to cull through 2,000 pages of changes in order to reflect all of those changes into our policies. I didn't explain that well.
Yeah, she was making the point that, and we were talking about the size of policy manuals and how much they've grown over the years. And a lot of that is because legislation now is requiring a tremendous amount of exact language that goes into policies. And when we got to this policy, she said, if you can believe this, we actually had to read through 2,000 pages of language that came down to us in order to put this policy together.
When I was on the Policy Committee, I think our book was like one-third of that volume.
Yeah, it's enormous. Be careful of your back when you carry it around. Another change. Any other questions, Catherine, about that?
No, just let me know where the next change is, what page you're on, please.
Okay. The pages, that is something that I think was updated by Dory. My current copy, oh, no, okay.
It might have been. I don't have her sitting in front of me either. I'm sorry.
And I apologize. I don't have the current page correspondence to, to the changes that we have. I'm going to just go over them, yeah, generally. We had asked her for corresponding pages, and I don't have that. The other change, another change that we have throughout, I, yeah, actually, this is another change, which is changes in bullying. There's a change in the language, so it sort of broadens the definition of who can be accused of bullying to, it changes the person, changes, it changes it to individual. So from student to individual. And then there's some additional training requirements and some parental notification or family notification around that bullying policy. Because the state has legalized cannabis, that has also impacted our policy across the student and staff sections, so that's another change. We also discussed the two mental health days, and I think we talked about that as a board last year, the two mental health days that we're allowing for students. So that's also reflected in our policy changes. Our wellness policy was in great shape, had already, was already aligned with the policy changes that we needed to do, so we're in good shape with our wellness policies. And there are some policy changes that we made just because of COVID that we are keeping. They were pretty, the language was general enough that we could keep it to sort of just protecting public health. And then lastly, there is a change in requirement that we need to have a curriculum committee. Our board changed that we need to have a, we need to add a committee to review curriculum. And Kathy had some ideas about that, and I'm going to turn that over to her.
Sure. Thank you.
Unless there are some other, any other questions about those broad policy changes we just discussed.
Yeah, I'm just going over what's in our packet. And so I'm starting on page 26. And communications from public, I mentioned this to Kathy. It's always been the policy that anyone who addresses us has to state their name and address. And I'm thinking that there are times when it's not a good idea for someone to give their address publicly and that maybe they could just privately, as they're speaking, give their name, but then give their address to the clerk. And I, you know, I just think that there may be people in protected situations that might be looked into. And then on the next page, I didn't understand, it says minutes. It's in the middle of the page, on page 27. Attend by means of electronic equipment until April 30, 2022. I understand exactly what that means. Does that mean you can?
That's the end of the executive order. Is that correct, Kelly? April 2022? Is that?
Which policy, I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at what we have here, and it says minutes. Technical edits and reflect new requirements for meetings conducted when one or more board meetings attend by means of electronic equipment until April 30. And I didn't know why the date was there because we've always had the ability to call in.
Right.
If you couldn't attend, so I didn't quite get what that was driving it.
It is reflective of the executive orders.
Which expire, I think, at that date.
Okay, I didn't quite get the thrust.
So Martha, may I interrupt for a second because you have some good thoughts here and we don't want to lose them? Susannah, how do you feel about we jot this down and people, and then we can consult with the attorneys or whomever we need to?
I would encourage you to consult with the attorney regarding the address because that has, that gets at residents versus non-residents addressing the board, and I think you want to be cautious about that.
And I believe it might be in a statute that they have to do that, so.
No, I understand, but I just think that some people are in protected situations. And that's all.
I'm sorry. Suzanne, if we could document what the concerns are, and certainly if you have concerns after this meeting, we have a month, you know, until our next meeting. This is just the first read. So if you want to get, okay, get in touch with you or Jill.
Absolutely. Yeah, before we, yeah. So I was going to say, after Kathy talked about the new committee, that, you know, our, there's our sort of next steps. We should talk about any other questions you have. But over this next month, all of your holiday reading would be the policy manual. And if you have any changes or questions or anything that you need to bring up, please get in touch with myself or with Kelly. We'll pass those along to the attorney. And then we can, you know, we can, our hope is that our next meeting, we'll be able to approve our policy changes.
My request would be, though, that we don't wait until the few days before the next meeting. We just need to have some lead time.
Yeah. And I just have a couple more questions. On page 28, toward the bottom of the page, it talks about grant proposals, and I'm sure we have some language about that. And it says here, we don't have a model policy on this topic, but I'm sure our district has.
That, yes, so, oh, I'm sorry. Suzanne, should I let you answer that? We have some policies that are specific to Mansfield that Shipman &amp; Goodwin does not develop model policies around. And so that's a note letting us know that you have that policy, but you didn't get it from us. And so, yes, we do have that policy. And you'll see that noted throughout the document, that there are several policies that we have created that are beyond what Shipman keeps in their book of models.
Okay. And on page 34, two-thirds of the way down, weapons or firearms possession of school property. Of course, this is just a little blurb here, but I just want to make sure that if we need police officers on a bus or on campus, on a campus, that, that's not prohibited.
Right. So that's all based on statute. So the statute states that no one may bring a weapon to school unless they are a school. So the statute states that no one may bring a weapon to school unless they are a school, or unless they are a peace officer, which is the way the statute reads. Or unless they have permission because of a program. Like sometimes, you know, you might do a history program on the Revolutionary War, and somebody brings a musket. But yeah, that's all statutorily defined.
Okay, they're on stable times, and I just want to make sure that-
Yes, absolutely, yep.
We are protecting those who need to carry them or trained to carry them.
Right.
Okay, thank you, that's, those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, on page twenty-eight, I was, um, the removal of an officer of the board and all of the board members, how did it change?
Let me see about that.
Twenty-eighth of the pack, I think, so.
Yeah, I apologize, my pack, my pages are not numbered. So I'll see if I can find it.
Was that another edit, technical edit?
Yeah, I think that's another tech, just another technical edit.
You'll see, you'll see quite a few technical edits in there. It doesn't change anything, they're just, perhaps just the language, I'm not sure. See if Kelly can find it.
Kelly's gonna. As Kelly's looking for that, Catherine, do you have any other questions?
Everything I was wondering about was technical edits, because I don't know what a technical edit is.
Yeah, so I'll give you an example. So you received as a supplement the entire policy manual, and I know you have a printed copy of it tonight, so I'll actually give you the page number you can refer to. It's page forty-five, under bylaws. So the very first section. Forty-five? Actually, you're lucky enough, you have the tabs, go to tab eighteen. So you'll see technical edits throughout the policy, and much of the technical edits are around changing gender-specific language or shalls and mayes sometimes, you know, depending upon, again, just upon their model and what they believe is more representative of the intention of the laws that this refers to often.
And taking out unnecessary words.
Yeah, yeah, it does not change, I guess that's the best way to think about it. It does not change the meaning of the policy.
Correct, thank you.
Word level edit, yeah. Dave or Edith or anybody else have any other questions before we talk about the? So Kathy had some recommendations. Edith, did you have any questions?
I asked my questions actually during the week ahead of time, so I am all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Susanna. You just heard that we do have to establish a curriculum committee. I personally am a little confused by this, because I kind of view curriculum in Mansfield as kind of a living, working thing that's in progress all the time. And I feel that we get quite a bit of information and ongoing updates as to what's going on with curriculum. So I am, I personally am a little confused what this committee is going to do. At the, it says that we have to review, update, and approve curriculum. So my suggestion is that we establish a committee right now. And I'd like to establish the same group members that are on the policy committee, because that policy committee really only meets a few times a year. And the curriculum committee, I, the way I'm looking at it now would meet maybe a few times a year. But I think maybe just the first step is to start it, and then to take some time to figure out, what does the committee do? That, those are my thoughts. Anyone else?
So I'll just chime in that I think the curriculum committee has a great opportunity to get an overview regularly about what's happening in our curriculum teams, and to be able to have conversation, sometimes in more depth perhaps, than we can even have at a board meeting. But I appreciate that the board is, is interested in knowing what's happening with curriculum, and we can continue to present several presentations over the course of a year about our curriculum and instructional practices.
So this would not, this would not alter the information that we've been getting in the past?
Right.
Correct?
Correct, but it is a required committee, and it, I believe the purpose of the committee is to really allow board members to have, you know, as much access as they can to what's happening with curriculum.
So that, just my thought is that this is where we start, and let's see what, what the role is, what, really what we're looking at. Catherine?
Are we taking out stuff as we put stuff in, is what I'd like to know?
In what, curriculum?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Catherine, can you speak into your microphone, I can't hear you.
I was asking if we were taking out stuff as we put new stuff in.
Are we taking things out of the curriculum as we put new things in? And my answer was, yes, the curriculum is, is all been revised.
And it's not a, a const, I mean, it's a document that is constantly being reviewed, revised. It's not just, okay, here it is.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a dynamic document, they call it.
Dynamic, that's the word, that's the word.
It's not like our policy manual.
No, it's not. Yeah, that's true.
That is true. Our policy manual will be living and breathing for a little while, yeah.
So is everyone okay with that makeup of that committee right now, just to get started? And my thinking was, because they won't, there won't be an awful lot of meetings as of right now, and rather than burden someone else who is on a committee that meets quite often, this might be, makes sense. But if you have any concerns or questions, or please just let me know. Okay, great, thank you very much. Go ahead, Kelly.
So I'll just conclude policies by reminding everybody, I think Suzanne told you that you will vote on these policies at the next full board meeting in January. So if you have questions between now and then, feel free to send them along so that we have the answers ready for you for January.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much, Susanna. Update on current studies.
Oh, we're going back to the slides. So we have several initiatives underway in the district, and we have some people in the audience this evening who have been shepherding this work and can respond to any questions that you might have. You will receive a full board report and presentation on each of these projects underway in the coming months, but I wanted to give you a reminder of what's going on and where we are. So there are three, special services review and equity audit and the Mansfield Middle School Modernization Study. So we'll, we'll take the special services program review first. This is, and again, we have shared this with you in the past, but this is something that we sought to do to really help us understand the, Jamie, go to the next slide, please. The degree to which our programs and the structures that we have in our special services department, the degree to which those were really supporting students with academic, social, and emotional needs. We thought this was a perfect time to do this study as we're moving into one new school for the elementary students, and as we're thinking about the needs of our middle school students, which, as you've certainly read about, have changed with the pandemic. And so we were fortunate to get in pretty early. This review started in August. They have looked at the individual education plans that we've developed for students. They have the staff, the they being the outside staff that we've hired to do this. They have conducted focus interviews with staff, administrators, and parents. They have gone into classrooms and observed what's happening in classrooms. There is a staff survey that was developed in collaboration with our equity audit that I'll speak to in a moment, that has been completed. A parent survey that is pending. And then there's been a tremendous amount of analysis of our data. And they will take a look at everything that they've gathered, all the data and evidence from all of these activities, and develop a report that should come to us in early January. And we intend to likely, even at the January meeting, we're hoping, which is not until the end of the month, be able to give you a full report on what was found in that review. Okay, the next review that's underway is what we call an equity audit. So the special services program review is being done by one of the local ress. It's being done by CREG, which is the Capital Region Education Council. The equity audit is being done by Insight Education, the same group that's done the training for us. They also are looking at a tremendous amount of data. In fact, much of the data that we put together for both of these groups overlapped, so that, that helped us a little bit. And they also are getting the perspective of multiple stakeholders, parents, students, and staff. And the focus here is on equitable educational experiences that, that people have in Mansfield. And so similarly, they have held focus groups. They have looked at data, as I mentioned, student performance data, attendance data, enrollment data, all kinds of information. They also have a collection of surveys that are nearly complete, and they should have a final report to us sometime in February. We would like to establish a district equity team after the first of the year that's going to help us make sense of the findings and be prepared to take some action based on the findings. We've gotten a little bit of feedback from Insight already, and they've told us that there's lots of interest and acknowledgement about the importance of this work and, and interest in engaging in this work. That they are hearing, that, that staff feel that there is an increased capacity and understanding to do this work, which I'm really glad to hear, given the amount of professional learning time we've devoted to it the last few years. And that there are already some actionable projects underway. And a lot of this, I would attribute to the institute that we ran this summer and continued with the trainings this fall, because those trainings actually asked people to, to do some self-reflection and to identify some personal actions that they could take to ensure a more equitable experience for all. So I think you'll hear quite a bit when this audit is completed. Given our schedule for board meetings, we think that we probably will present this to you in March. Okay, it won't be finished till February anyways. Catherine?
The two groups you named was CREG and Insight?
Yeah, Insight Education, the same group that did the trainings. The one you attended, yeah. And the third study is the Middle School Modernization Study.
May I interrupt for a moment?
Sure.
I apologize. I attended a Cabe workshop conference yesterday, and equity, inclusion, diversity was one of the topics. And they had to go so far as to explain the difference between equality and equity, and what does that mean? And I was really taken aback by how few school systems even understand what this work is. And I, I just have to say, I was extremely proud to come from Mansfield and have, have this work being done so far. It was, it was eye-opening for me, so, great work.
Yeah, thank you.
Great work.
Thanks. So the last of the studies is being done by Colliers International. They are the same firm that is serving as our owner's rep for the new school. And they bid on the opportunity to conduct the Mansfield Middle School Modernization Study, which they call a facilities conditions assessment, or an FCA. I have learned through our construction work that there is a whole world of acronyms that I never knew before, so. So this study is also well underway, and in fact, we will be meeting with their team in an initial discussion to get their preliminary findings next week. And they're, through, through that conversation, they're going to learn a little bit more about where we would like them to prioritize the remaining work that they need to do and the, the eventual focus of the report that they will be presenting to us. So I'm very excited to, to hear what they have to share with us. They are hoping to have a final report finished in early January. And then the hard work begins, because they will come to you and, and share the report, but they're also going to talk with you about some things that you might want to consider to address their findings. Of course, you can choose to do nothing. But again, this goes back to, you know, sort of the promise we made to the community when we first undertook our facility study back in two thousand sixteen, that we would look at all our facilities, not just the elementary school. And as you're well aware, there's been quite a bit we've been able to do at the middle school over the years anyways. But I'm curious to, to see their findings.
Any questions?
I'm just curious about timing, it sounds like they will come to, we'll have a board presentation in January, or that'll be later also?
Well, we're trying to figure that out still.
Because we have budget.
Yeah, we have budget, we have a lot to do in January and February also. We also have our second report of progress. The no-students report is coming up in February, so we'll figure out where, where this fits in. And even though their report will be done in early January, they may need more time to put some options together for us to consider. So I want to make sure we give them time for that also. So we'll figure it out.
Kelly, would that include possibility for reimbursement for the state? Or all of those options going to be?
They're gonna present everything.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you. And the school building project?
Sure, I'm gonna change the order on your agenda a little bit, because I had roof first, but I'd rather keep going with the slides.
Oh, I apologize.
No, no, that's quite all right, I was gonna do it anyways. So this was presented to the school building committee today. You've seen charts like this in the past. This is an update that shows you the work that is currently underway on the, the new school, so November, December, and into January. A couple of things to note, that all the geothermal wells, the sixty-six wells, not only are finished, but they are in the, at the point of installing the piping, meaning connecting the wells ultimately to the building. So that's pretty exciting. We will have heat and air conditioning, because they're getting all, all the piping laid. The other thing that's really interesting is that they have started to erect steel, more in some parts of the building than others, and I'll show you that in a moment. And they're even beginning to put some floor decks in, so that you can see where the first floor ceiling is and the second floor floor is. Next week, we will receive some of the metal decking for the roof, which means that they will be able to start to enclose the building to do some more interior work. And another new word I learned, we have wood beams on the first floor that are called glue lamb beams, beams, which means pieces of wood glued together, I think. And they are all wrapped right now in protective coatings, because they're exposed to the elements, because they have to be in place before the roof goes on. And so I'm gonna show you a photo in a minute, and you'll see that a lot of the beams are already in place. And so this building is really starting to look like a building. So if you go to the next slide, this is an aerial view of our new school. And Jamie, you see where your cursor is right now? That little white, oh, no, that white dot, I don't know what that white dot is. Oh, that was somebody else's cursor, I took this as a screenshot. It's perfect, though, how I did it, because that little cursor there is pointing to some of those glue lamb beams. And so again, they're covered in protective coating, but you should know that those are a beautiful wood underneath. And so if you'll remember some of the artist renderings on the top floor, we have vaulted ceilings in the classroom that are all wood, and those wood beams will be there as well. So this is pretty exciting, to see the steel go up and to see the building start to take shape. You are looking at that part of the building, you're looking at what we've been identifying on the top floor as the first grade and second grade classrooms. And in another couple of weeks, we're gonna see even more shape. And the last thing I wanted you to see, real, another really exciting event with the new school is, and I hope some of you had a chance to get there this week, the beam has been ceremoniously signed by every elementary school student and staff member. Um, all of the elementary students were bussed over to the middle sc- to, to the new site, not the middle school, uh, to the new school site. Uh, you can see in the bottom right picture, Lauren Rodriguez greeting a class of students. Thanks to, I think Peter, you took all these pictures, thanks to Peter for that. Um, you can see on the left side, um, some of the Goodwin students signing the beam. And on the very, uh, top right, you see students getting, uh, a great look, uh, at, at the new school, being presented by, uh, Dr. Laurel Brandon, who's one of our enrichment teachers. They've been doing a lot of, um, providing a lot of lessons, um, to students about net zero construction and helping the students get excited about the new building. The really exciting thing about the, the beam, which I had kind of forgotten until it was mentioned to me earlier this week, we're gonna have a section of the mechanical room that's gonna have some windows in it so that students can see what the mechanicals, um, are in that room, the geothermal, which is, it's not gonna look like a whole lot, but that's where this beam's gonna be. So they'll get to see the signatures as, as they look through the window, which is really fun. So the beam will be there tomorrow, so if you haven't had a chance to sign it, feel free to go over to Southeast School anytime tomorrow and put your name on the beam. And the last thing I need to share with you is about the roof. So, um, Mansfield Middle School roof is going, construction is going quite well. Um, the snow that we had last night, of course, halted any roof work today. Um, but I, I talked with, um, Candace today, and we have not had any leaking, which is good news. Um, and, uh, uh, they managed, you know, the, the snow on, on the parsh- on the, on the roof that's under construction, um, just fine. Um, they are still on target, even with a couple of, of days lost this week. They're still on target to be, um, nearly, uh, complete with the roof by the end of the month. And they call it substantially completed, meaning, um, it's operational. The, as I've mentioned to you before, the solar, um, installation will not occur until this summer. But we are feeling very good about getting this building buttoned up before we go through another winter. And that's my report.
Great, thank you, Kelly. Any questions or comments? Catherine?
How old is the roof on the middle school?
Um, it, yeah, it's about a, a little over thirty years old. Yeah.
No other questions or comments? I don't believe we have any new business. Second hearing for visitors, is there anyone who wants to approach the board? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Thank you, Catherine.
I will second.
Thank you, Susanna. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Any suggestions for future agenda items? Alrighty, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Catherine. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeanette. All in favor? Opposed?